All right, so thank you so much for being here, for joining this breath work. Settle your system. Tonight, we're gonna really, really let go, relax, release anything you're holding on to. And if right now you're shaking, you're burning off that extra energy, perfect. And if you're ready to release, to relax, to let go, I invite you to lie down or to be in a comfortable seated position. Close your eyes if that's comfortable. And just start to connect with your breath. In through the nose, out through the nose, your own pace, your own rhythm. Nowhere to be, nothing to do. This space is yours, this time is yours. And feel the surface below you, where it connects with your body. And feel it holding you, supporting you. And let your body sink. And as you focus on your breath, is there any space of tension in your body? No judgment, just noticing. Any space that's tight, any space that's holding pain, anxiety, tension, stress. I invite you to breathe into that space. And then release. Letting your body relax even deeper. Oh, so gentle. Breathing in through the nose, breathing out through the nose. Beautiful. Breathing all together, in for four, through the nose, out for four, through the mouth, no force.
In, two, three, four. Out, two, three, four. In, two, three, four. Out, two, three, four. In-
Connecting with this rhythm.
Three, four. Out, through the mouth. Three, four.
In through the nose.
Three, four.
Out through the mouth.
Three, four. In, two, three, four.
Just noticing the simple rhythm of your breath.
In, two, three, four. Out, two, three-
Feel the air filling your body with life.
Two, three, four. Out, two, three, four. In, two, three, four.
Every exhale, a soft release. Letting your body sink deeper. Letting tension and stress melt away.
In, two, three, four. Out, two, three-
There's nothing you need to fix. Just connect, just notice.
Two, three, four. In, two, three, four. Out, two, three, four.
Invite your shoulders to soften. Your jaw. Release the tongue from the tip of your mouth. In through the nose. Out through the mouth.
Three, four. In, two, three, four. Out, two, three, four. In, two, three, four. Out, two, three, four. In, two, three, four.
Up the way to this day, this week, of this year. Salt into the surface below you. Letting it pour out of you with every breath. Giving yourself permission to rest in your body.
In, two, three, four. Out, two, three, four.
In this space, you are safe. It's safe to be slow. Feel how the breath naturally slows you down. Bringing you into connection with your body. In through the nose. Out through the mouth. Every exhale, releasing tension. Bringing a deep breath up to the top, breathing all the air in up to the top. And release, blow all the air out to the bottom. If you're seated, bring your chin to your chest, holding the breath out at the bottom. Changing the chemistry of your body, pushing past your comfort zone just a little bit, holding your breath out at the bottom. Feeling what that feels like as you hold your breath out, relaxing the rest of your body. And if you need a quick sip of air in and out, keep holding the breath out at the bottom. Taking sips of air as you need it, but holding the breath out at the bottom. Feeling these sensations coursing through your cells, moving through your veins. Letting your body change, letting your body restore. And take a deep breath up to the top, all the way to the top, holding in your insides, squeezing at the top. Holding the breath in. Feeling the energy build up your spine as you're holding your breath at the top. It's building, building up as it moves up your spine towards the crown of your head and out the top of your head. And release, blowing out like you're blowing out through a straw. Return to your own breathing, your own rhythm, your own pace. In through the nose, out through the nose. Connect to your body, feeling the sensations. And release your body even further, melting into the surface that holds you. In through the nose, out through the nose. Your own rhythm, gentle, gentle, gentle. Where in your body are you still holding tension? Stress, anxiety, can you breathe into that space? And we'll breathe together again. In through the nose for four counts, out through the mouth for four counts. In a circle of breathing, no force, no tension.
Two, three, four. Out, two, three, four.
In through the nose.
Three, four.
Out through the mouth.
Three, four.
In- With every exhale, imagine you're releasing anything you don't need.
Two, three, four. Out, two, three, four.
Letting your body grow heavy and heavier with every breath, like you're sinking into the earth. The grounds beneath you can hold all of it. Let it support you. Sinking deeper. You don't have to carry it all. It's okay to set it down, even for this moment. Let your body rest. Let your body restore as you're breathing in through the nose, out through the mouth. Notice where your body is asking for release. And breathe into that space. Every breath is clearing. Every exhale, a release. Using this breath as a bridge between tension and empty ease. Releasing with every exhale. Keep letting it go. Breath after breath. As your body softens, your mind follows. Feel yourself more rooted, more grounded, more connected. Being anchored, anchored into your body with your breath. And melt even deeper. And take a deep breath all the way to the top, squeeze, squeezing at the top and blow all the air out to the bottom. If you're in a seated position, bringing your chin to your chest, blowing all the air out to the bottom and hold your breath out at the bottom. Feeling into your body, feeling the sensations running through you as you relax and hold your breath out at the bottom. And take a sip of air in and out as you need it, as you keep holding your breath out at the bottom. Feeling into those sensations, pushing past your comfort zone just a little bit. Holding your breath out at the bottom, no air in your lungs. Increasing the CO2 in your blood as it restores you on a cellular level. And take a deep breath up to the top, in through the nose. Breathing all the way to the top, hold the breath in. Hold in your pelvic floor muscles like you're holding in your insides, squeezing everything up as you feel the energy rise, as a light starts at the base of your spine, building the energy. And this light and this energy build as it comes up your spine all the way to the crown of your head, spilling out as it surrounds you. And breathe out like you're blowing out through a straw. Slow, gentle release of the breath. Returning to your own breathing, in through the nose, out through the nose. Feeling what the body feels now. Where there's lightness, where there's brightness. As you release, you feel lighter. Are there any sensations in your feet? Are there any sensations in your toes? Are there any sensations in your fingers? Just noticing, experiencing everything as you ground into your body. Focusing on your breath, in through the nose, out through the nose. Letting everything else fall away in this moment. And we'll begin breathing together again. In through the nose for four, out through the mouth for four. Leaning into this rhythm.
In, two, three, four. Out, two, three, four. In-
Notice the stillness that lives beneath your breath. A gentleness, a knowing, a returning to calm. Notice how calm is spreading through every cell of your body. Giving you a chance to restore, to repair. There's no need to chase peace from those inside of you beneath your breath. Right here in this moment, feeling peace wash over you. Every inhale, a gentle expansion. Every exhale, a deep surrender. Letting your body melt even further. Your body knows how to return to calm. It's always underneath, it's always there. Breathing into that calm. Feeling that peace surround you, going through you. You are calm. You are grounded. You are anchored in peace. You are safe. Everything is settling. Mind, body, spirit. Releasing and relaxing. Your nervous system is finding that balance. Feel into the reset that's happening. Staying open. Stay soft. And take a deep breath up to the top, squeezing all the muscles in your body and blow all the air out to the bottom. Bring your chin to your chest if you're in a seated position, holding the air out at the bottom. Pushing the furthest that you've pushed tonight. Relaxing the rest of your body as you hold your breath out at the bottom. Telling yourself you're safe, you're in control. Resetting the cells in your body, holding your breath out at the bottom. If you need a quick sip of air, breathe in and then quickly back out, holding your breath out at the bottom. Repeat that as necessary as you push. Push into that restoration. Beautiful. Now take a deep breath up to the top. And hold your breath in at the top. Feeling that energy build through your body. Feeling that peace spread throughout every cell in your being. Holding your breath at the top. And then slowly, gently, release the breath like blowing through a straw. Slow, 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 gentle, release the breath. Slow, 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 gentle, release the breath. And now bringing awareness to your toes. Feeling them relax even deeper. And your feet and your ankles. Letting them become heavy and release any last bit of tension that you were holding. Breathing your awareness into the lower legs. Your knees, your thighs. And then exhale and let them become heavy. Weighted with peace, weighted with safety, weighted with gentleness. We hold a lot of tension in our hips. Sadness and trauma. Breathe into that space. And truly release, let it go. Breathing into our belly. Our lower back. Our ribs, our chest. Feeling these parts of your body. And then letting go of anything you're still holding on to. Becoming heavier. More grounded, more rooted to the surface below you. And let your shoulders drop. Your arms, your hands, your fingers relax. Letting go of carrying the weight of the world. Gently releasing. And relax your neck. And your jaw. Your cheekbones, your mouth, your nose, your eyes. Letting your whole face release. And now relax the crown of your head. Letting it become completely relaxed and heavy. Feeling the peace and the gentleness throughout your entire body. As you relax and let go. Feeling this peace, this calm. It's yours to keep, it's yours to take with you. To come back to anytime you need, it's always there. And I gently invite you back into this space. Maybe wiggle your fingers or your toes. Gently rock your body. Taking a deep breath in to the top. And then sigh. Beautiful. Thank you so much for joining us tonight for this breath work. Beautiful space. I can feel your energy through the computer, which means it's pretty powerful.